Get the nod. Thank you. Got the nod. It's nine o'clock. We'll call the meeting of Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We will also be meeting at 9:15, plus or minus, Lincoln County Board of Equalization. We do follow the Open Meetings Act, a copy of which is posted at the entry of the room, as amended, I should say. And we'll open with prayer. Commissioner Woodruff, please.
Please join me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the wonderful weather we have enjoyed. We thank you for the many blessings we enjoy as well. Look after those less fortunate than ourselves, such that they may seek comfort and guidance from you. Look after this group as we meet today. Let us share some of your wisdom and insight in regards to the important issues of the constituents of Lincoln County. Look after the folks in law enforcement, those in the first responder groups that make for a much safer community and area for us to live in and enjoy our lives. Provide some comfort and some armor to the people in the military, both here and abroad, in this very troubling time that we live in. These things we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. I might entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting that was held February 20, 2024.
Second. Questions or concerns, comments? Tammy, please.
Brenz.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye. Next item on the agenda are the claims and treasures receipts. I think we should have got a copy to review in our package.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the claims and treasures receipts as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions or corrections? Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Brenz.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye. That ox lord will be done here. It'll be 9:05. Next item is received and ordered filed, the fee report submitted by the Lincoln County Sheriff.
Make a motion to approve an order filed, the fee report submitted by the county sheriff in the amount of $4,297.63 and $2,378.10.
Second. A motion in a second. Any questions, comments? Roll call, vote.
Brenz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye. As to have this next item put on, I, do we have a copy of the letter, Northing? We don't have one.
Okay, you mailed it out.
Okay. So would you just run a copy of that, please? Thank you.
We can sign this, Ruler, right now?
Okay.
Is there a second signature?
Yes.
Oh, thanks. I guess I'll just start on that comment. Just, I think we're probably all aware the Postal Service is considering closing down the North Platte operation for one of the many functions they serve on. They both cancel, they process the mail, they do different items. And so, bottom line, rather than having the last mail go out in the evening, that would end up sending a truck overnight to Denver to do some of the work, turn around, bring it back, and add two or three days to the process, cost us employees locally, and make what is, in my opinion only, a deteriorating mail system even worse. So, I can, I'd like to take credit for drafting this letter. I shopsmithed this letter with the permission of the Chamber Development Corporation, Gary Pearson, and Cassie had given me a comment. So I tried to hit on the highlights that they had already mentioned. Basically says that we think that as a board, we'd like to remain a up and running, functioning processing center that does all of the functions that they currently do, and rather than sending it to an already overloaded system in Denver. You know, when times are good, it's going to take a day up and back to get that via mail. When we already do that right here, we spent a tremendous amount of money just in the last, I think, two or three years getting the equipment so that we could process it here. And so, that's, that's the reason. The letter of opposition, I would open it up to comments or questions from anyone here.
Appreciate the comments by, and the work by everybody that facilitated this. The distribution center in North Platte is, it's an important function that's provided here locally for mail delivery. And when I saw the notice coming out that they were looking to close it, although the language in the notice made it seem like it was already a foregone conclusion, I had some, just on its face, major questions about how it would create efficiencies. I don't think that it does by any stretch of the imagination. I'd also let the board know that conversations were had with the congressional delegation. They understand the importance of keeping the facility open in North Platte and how it serves not only Lincoln County but all of Western Nebraska. And they've assured me that they'll, they'll do what they can on their end. But I think, yeah, letters like this are only going to add to the fight to keep it open. So I appreciate this being on and the work that you've done, Mr. Chairman.
If you like it, I'd entertain a motion to authorize myself to sign it.
Chairman, I would move to-
On behalf of the board.
I would move to accept the draft, propose the letter in opposition to propose closing of the North Platte Mail Processing Distribution Center, mail it to the appropriate folks at U.S. Postal Service.
Second. Questions, comments?
Thank you for instigating that.
Yes.
Very important.
Yeah, very well written. It hit on a lot of the concerns that local residents have brought forth to most of us, I believe. And I feel like I've seen other companies go through reductions in service like this with unfavorable results to the customers. So I think this is a good, a good thing for us to get behind.
Thank you. Tammy, roll call.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Brenz.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye. Thank you. Next item, authorize the chairman to sign the right-of-way permit submitted by Nebraska Public Power District. Jason?
Good morning.
Welcome.
Well, this is a right-of-way permit from MPPD. Pardon me. Right-of-way permit?
No, I'm waiting for that good old Jason Schultz, Lincoln County.
Oh, sorry. Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent.
Thank you. Good morning.
So this is a permit from MPPD for a fiber line that actually originates over in Keith County and looks like is going over and connecting to the Gerald Gilman Station area. So, coming down State Farm, we will do a pre-construction meeting with them to look at the location of that. This one's a little bit different. They did amend some of the language in the permit, considering they're a public entity and what Tyler has taken a look at it and is okay with it. And the only other thing was the billing. They just requested that we work up the fee and then bill them for it. And considering they're a public entity, I guess I felt that was acceptable.
This is approximately five and three-quarters miles worth of line?
Yep.
You know, I thought it was interesting list. You know, I, I really appreciated their detailed first section deal, but had a hard time seeing it overall on the map from point A to B rather than the section slices, but good. And Tyler, I guess, so you did review the part that was scratched out and-
I did. They simply took our, the waiver of liability and made it mutual. So instead of it being one-sided now, reach releasing each other from liability. I don't know what kind of liability we would incur if they messed up the right-of-way, other than some dirt work, but I was comfortable.
Jason, this follows State Farm Road the entire way?
I believe so, yes. And I think there, attached to the original, there was a big fold-out map that I think shows the overall route pretty well.
Oh, that's why this guy right here, sorry about that.
Yeah, it's kind of difficult to copy, so there's only one.
There you go.
You've reviewed it all.
Yeah.
Had a conversation, obviously, with them.
This must be the Keith County portion, and this is the State Farm portion.
Once it comes into county.
Yeah, this is East County Road 70 over in Keith County.
Yep.
Here. And then this is our portion here.
Then I believe, I remember, it comes all the way down State Farm until it goes into the state right-of-way, and then it's on either state right-of-way or-
Highway 25.
Or there.
Highway 29.
Yeah.
You know, I was trying to see, where's Highway 25?
Right here.
But I didn't, do we have Highway 25?
Do what?
It's 29.
We have on our route.
25.
What's that now?
25 goes to Wallace.
Somebody's got us 25?
25 goes to-
Yeah.
Yes, the Wallace Highway.
Yeah. That's this one here.
Why did I want to say 29?
It's there. It listed as 29. I thought it was 29.
Okay, anyway, I do, I do know that there was a discrepancy between 29 and 25. I thought I picked it, but maybe I'm wrong.
Highway 25 goes from the interstate down to Wallace.
Thank you.
Chairman, I make a motion to authorize you to sign the right-of-way permit submitted by Nebraska Public Power District for fiber optic cable along the proposed route as the application.
Second.
A motion in a second. Discussion.
And Jason, you'll coordinate the final expense.
Yep.
The permit.
Yep. Work up the permit.
That'll be handled in this process.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, Tammy?
Brenz.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye. If I don't make any more noise, I may have to, I'm gonna let you pull this up. Galen, thank you. Go back to Becky for a second, try that. Thank you. It's 9:15. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners convenes the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again, following the Open Meetings Act, a copy of which is posted at the rear of the room. First order of business is to the minutes of the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held February 20, 2024. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve those minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on February 20, 2024. Second.
A motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please, Tammy.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brenz.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye. Next item, certificates of correction or refund submitted by the county assessor. And being her officiant self, there are none today again. Thank you. Motor vehicle tax exemption applications submitted by the county treasurer. I think you might have a couple of those.
Chairman, I have application form 457 for exemption for Great Plains Health here in North Platte for a Honda model year 2024 van. This specifies only general hospital use. County treasurer weighed in, comments that it's not charitable, but will accept the general use per state statute. As I see no alternative, I will move to approve the permit.
Second.
A motion in a second. Further discussion, questions, concerns? Roll call, vote.
Weems.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Brenz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I have an application for exemption, and it is my motion that we approve the application by New Life Assembly at 601 East Francis Street, Suite 1, for a Chrysler Town and Country 2012 minivan. It will be reused for transportation, for church activities, ministries, and functions. It falls under the religious exemption. That is my motion. It has been approved by County Treasurer Alex Gerchillo.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Ruler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Brenz.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye. Other business to come before the Board of Equalization. Hearing none, I will adjourn as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization reconvenes the Lincoln County Board at 9:18.
That's what happens in a short month. We'll make up for it next month.
Sure, okay, more people paying in.
Never have.
About half of that's payroll, I'm sure.
Yeah. You pay all the way.
This whole packet right there.
I think these are all for Joe, I think.
Your word on that. Looks like you have them separated.
You wasn't the one to have that one, because I have another one.
Do you?
Yeah. You're right.
Put it on Jill's bed.
Tyler, when you have a moment, not today, but can you research the waterways and the statutes regarding people being able to traverse rivers and things like that in the state?
Yeah.
Thanks.
I thought it was, as long as you're on the water, you're okay.
It is.
When you step on the soil and you're doing, you know, brush your hair, you're dead.
Mm-hmm.
I thought it was-
Maybe. Water is water in the stream, you're fine.
So it's a dry creek.
That's a problem.
Yeah.
Jason, about that. I believe we did last year and the year before.
And that comment came up in relation to this or whatever.
Yeah, I would go ahead and recommend against that to anybody. The route it can take.
There is. People get into that part.
I did not get that far in the lead in the conversation with Mr. Lawson.
Guess it's difficult to get in there to enforce anything.
It can be exceedingly difficult.
Can we stay?
Yeah.
Thanks.
I thought it was, as long as you're on the water.
It is.
When you step on the soil and you're doing, you know, the Russian proverb, ejecta. I thought it was.
Maybe.
Well, there's water in the stream, you're fine.
So it's a dry creek.
That's a problem.
Station, mother.
I don't believe we did last year and the year before.
And that comment came up in relation to this or whatever.
It's connected, yeah. Suppose they can come in with that, though. But then they have to. Environmental protection.
Yeah, I would go ahead and recommend against that to anybody.
The route it can take.
There is.
People get into that part.
I did not get that far in Louise in the conversation with Easter.
Guess it's difficult to get in there to enforce it.
It can be exceedingly difficult.
Whoa, you found it twice, Ward Hill.
It's 9:30. Next agenda item is to discuss, consider adoption of the revised Lincoln County Employees Handbook or Manual. I know we had this on several times, last time as recent as last week. I believe we had some elected officials in attendance at that time that kind of raised some concern and were wanting to see the final draft. Is there someone that would like to address that? If you have any questions or concerns, I can do so at this time. If not, if that's also okay.
Oh, Alex Gerchillo, Lincoln County Treasurer. Good morning, Noah.
Good morning.
Good morning. I read through this and I emailed Tyler most of the things that I had, which were minor. The only thing that I was concerned with on page 17, section 313, illness and injury leave donation.
Yes, what?
Illness and injury leave donation, page 17, section 313. In their states, no more than 560 hours of donated leave may be received by employee during a 12-month period. I had asked where that 560 hours came from. Our employees are paid by, on a monthly basis. It's just not a nice number to break down per month if employees trying to plan ahead. It's 46.67 hours a month, or 10.77 hours a week. Our employees' time doesn't go in by .67 or .77. They put it in by quarters, .25. Just wondering if we could make it a nice number for our employees to be able to plan ahead. I have had an employee have this happen to them. They had had some major surgeries and did get some time donated. She was trying to plan it out last year. So it was just, it is an incident that did occur in my office, so just wanted to see if we could make it a number that would be able to round out.
It's a good point. I came up with 68. What did you come up with, .68, Kent? Or you did 67 or 68?
I didn't do the math. I guess I was gonna ask.
Neither did I. I'm sorry.
I was gonna ask Tyler, where did we come up with 560?
You're gonna have to ask somebody that's been working here longer than me.
Okay, this was.
Because that was in the prior edition.
I think it has to do with coordination with the FMLA, didn't it?
Um.
How many weeks?
Twelve weeks would be.
Twelve weeks at 40, is that 560?
No, that's 480.
Right. Nobody goes to law school for their math. Pardon me? Nobody goes to law school for their math. That number was in the prior edition of the manual. I didn't touch it. I didn't think that was my purview to do so. If the board wants to, I don't see a problem with it.
At seven months, at 80 hours.
Yeah.
Eight hundred, or that'd be 560.
Eight times seven, fifty-six, yeah.
I don't know if that's where it came, I don't know where it came from.
So that'd be 70 days. Right?
Yeah, 70 days leave. Eight-hour day, right?
Based on the FMLA?
No, just based on math.
No, eight times seven is fifty-six. Add a zero, five sixty. Seven, seventy-eight hour day. I'm guessing that's where it came.
Our employees don't work on eight-hour days, so they work on seven-hour days.
Just trying to explain where I think the number came from.
But a majority of our employees probably within the county do work on eight-hour days.
No, majority of employees work on seven-hour days. There are 35-hour employees.
No, they don't. You're talking about the courthouse, but that's not a majority of our employees.
Well, I guess I was just basing it on employees in the courthouse, since I work in the courthouse, so I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, yeah. That wouldn't make sense to me. Not saying it has to stay that way.
It's at the road department. It applies to, that's probably where it came from. An eight-hour day, 70 days. The only math that works. I don't know. Doesn't matter to me what number we put on it.
It's still a relatively arbitrary number. It just happens to divide out evenly when you look at it that way. So again, I don't care what the board decides to do. You can adopt the handbook with a proposed change. I can make that change. We can delay it longer. Doesn't matter to me.
Let's not delay it longer. How's that? Let's start at that one, okay, and work backwards. Okay. So I appreciate you pointing that out and taking the time to go through the math. You know, if we go, if we go back and try to say, because we have some employees maybe work seven and a half, I can think of people that come in a half hour late. I can think of sevens and eights. I think eight is a logical number to leave it on, myself, based on an eight foundation, at least.
I guess my math, my math wasn't eight hours a day. I was just thinking in a 12-month period because we get paid monthly. That's what my math was based on, in the period of the paid period.
Are your employees paid monthly or hourly? Paid hourly. You get paid once a month, you receive a check once a month, but there are hourly employees, most of them, right?
They are hourly. I was going by the paid period.
Yeah, but, okay, so, but if they missed a day of work and took it off, then that wouldn't necessarily correlate with a full 20 or 21 workdays at seven or seven and a half hours. I mean, we have to base it on something. My logic is, is eight has worked.
Yeah, well, outside of the courthouse, it's appropriate. So it's not.
But, but even within the courthouse, not everybody works a seven-hour day.
It's not like you're gonna have a lot of employees and pack it by this. That's a lot of hours. Lot of days. I don't.
I don't want to dominate this conversation.
But if you divide 560 by seven hours, that gives your employee 80 days. I mean, it still divides out, you know, if you divide it by eight hours, or if you divide it by seven hours. So I think if you divide hours instead of months, it might.
Yeah, I was just asking where the number came from as well.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
That was just my question.
Well, we're gonna blame Joe Wright, because he's not here. How's that?
As any consolation, I blamed two Joes.
I have a lot of Joes. I gave Tyler permission.
Joe and Joe.
No, in all fairness, Alex did just ask where it came from, because it was, yeah. That was not one we could discuss. I had no idea. No idea.
Okay, thank you, Alex. So we're gonna leave it right where it's at, eh? Oh, no, I mean, unless I.
I have one more question.
Oh, okay.
And it might just be.
You know, I was gonna try to limit it to one question from elected official. There she is.
Okay.
Go ahead, Julie.
Julie Stanger, Lincoln County Assessor. I have just the one question on page 11, because I do think maybe it has changed from the previous handbook. It has to do with the paid personal days. I believe prior to this one, our employees received one personal day January 1st and the second one on July 1st. And this says if they, the date of separation from the county shall be forfeited and not paid out by the county if they haven't used them by the time they quit or get fired or resign, whatever. But, so my question on this is, if they start December 15th, they've only been here two weeks, January 1st hits, they get these two personal days?
That would be my understanding.
Okay. They start January 15th. Don't get any personal days till the full following year, January 1st? Because I think before they would.
Do we get one in July and one in January?
One in July.
So, and then I think it said if they worked here six months, so say they started in June, I don't think they got it in July. I think they had to work their six months and then they got their first one. So I guess that, I just want explanations of what it is.
That wouldn't necessarily, so if they hadn't worked here six months, they wouldn't get the first on January 1, would they?
That's what I'm asking, because it's not really spelled out in this one. I think the old one, it kind of was. Kind of.
Shouldn't we have to work here six months?
I don't think so.
This has always been a problem.
Well, let's correct it right now, then.
Do you have the old book? I didn't bring the old one with me. Do you have a copy of the old one? Book and copy.
That's right.
I think it did kind of state something about work in the six months, so that, you know, if they started in, like, August, I think, or when, maybe it was June, they worked the six months and got their first one.
Yeah.
And when January 1st hits, then they get their, another one again.
The full-time employee is not eligible until he or she has worked six months. Going by calendar, if his or her first six months of employment is completed before July 1, the employee would be eligible to use both personal days in the calendar year he or she became eligible in. But if he or sh, his or her first six months of employment is completed on or after July 1, the individual would be eligible for only one personal day during the calendar year he or she became eligible.
Two thoughts on that. One, that is an exceedingly complicated way of keeping one or two potential bad actors every four or five years from starting here, abusing their two personal days, and then quitting.
Isn't that great?
Two, part of the concern I had was these, these two personal days are in the form of holidays. They're replacements for Columbus Day and Arbor Day, and there's no other holiday on the calendar that you have to work here six months before you get.
But if they start January 15th, then they don't get any of those two days at all until the following year?
So this, you, you chose, you changed that to the wording?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And I'm okay with whatever we decide. I guess I just want to know it, because, you know, we want to make sure that we do our time sheets and everything correctly, so, and it just wasn't spelled out as.
Despite, I read that, not a question I didn't understand it, that, well, if that's the way it was before, then.
That is not the way it was before. The way it was before was confusing to literally everyone.
Well, might be confusing, but I, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with it, yes.
And that's why the board got it last week to read it and weigh in on it.
I, I guess I don't, I'm not hung up on it. I don't know that it's gonna get abused a lot.
It is, Kent, though. If you, if you hire an employee after January 1, they don't get any personal days till the following January, the way this is written. They get two personal days, January 1.
On January 1, which I don't like.
So if I hire somebody January 15th, all my other people in the office get two personal days, but this one doesn't get any, because they subsequently got hired two weeks later than, than, I mean, yeah, I guess I don't much.
I totally see your point. We have a new face at the table. Please identify yourself, ma'am.
I'm Lois Block, Registered Deeds.
Good morning, Lois.
Good morning. I just, if, why can't we, instead of, just the number of days that you work, you get a personal day? So if you start, like, in February, you work, I don't know how many days in six months, you work that many days, then you can have a personal day. You don't have to worry about the day you started or.
For me, these, these, these two floating days are in lieu of the holidays. So if.
That's the way they started.
If we add a statement into the language that says if you are employed by Lincoln County on that day, the holiday that these are awarded, you receive them. Because I'm, I'm in line with Tyler's thought of whether holiday has a time requirement associated with that, that day off.
But I also see Julie's point where if you have a person hired, it specifies January 1st.
So we can change it.
But, you know, I have to back up here, because I was the one that actually inserted the original personal days. Back in my time, so let's blame Joe.
I already did.
Because we had Arbor Day and what was the other?
Columbus Day.
Columbus Day. And I had some of my rural friends say, come on. She'll, we're out plowing the fields, even on Sunday, what, you know, we got things to do. What is, you know, even the schools go to school that day. So I thought, well, we met with the elected officials back then, and we said, how about giving a personal day rather than a holiday, so that they could, whenever they wanted these days, but we wouldn't close the courthouse? The courthouse would remain open. We'd have the courthouse remaining open two additional days, but the employees wouldn't lose anything. So I see Tyler's logic now, because that originally was put in, in lieu of a holiday. Mr. Chairman, one alternative would be that a personal day would be granted, awarded on January 1 to be used any time during the year. A second personal day could be awarded on July 1 to be used any time during the year, the calendar year.
That's kind of what it was.
That's what it was, wasn't it?
That's the way it is.
Well, there was a requirement to work here for so long before you got it before.
And you guys gotta remember, this rule has to fit in the software.
Yeah.
Because we, we're not gonna, I mean, none of us are gonna know when to go through, I mean, to apply these to each employee. We're not gonna do that. We have to have a rule that will fit within the software.
My suggestion would be, for a couple of different reasons, primarily simplicity. Second being, we have a bunch of positions in various departments we can't fill anyway, so we're not too concerned about constant rollover here. Why not just give them the two days, January 1, if they're already employed? And when you come into employment with the county, you get two days.
I agree. There again, I don't know if the software can be set up that way.
Well, even if the software can or can't, I disagree with that, because the two holidays that they replaced, they didn't take January 1st and January 2nd, or January 3rd and January 4th. They had to wait till that holiday. Now, we can float it up or down, but, okay, so, so let's, let's think this through. Let's see if we approve, just talking, all items in this, other than the ones that we may have a question on, get the thing approved, set up a committee to try to work with people within the courthouse, to get that one item addressed, and have that inserted as part of the completed manual in the future. That's a question for discussion.
We can't do that, because it's gotta be complete and done when everybody signs it. Otherwise, it's gotta go back around again and get signed.
How can we find out about the software compatibility?
Well, those need to decide on what you want to try to do, and then we'll contact. And maybe right now, plug it in January, July 1, and some very like dates in the rule. I, I mean, I don't know. I mean, there's other rules, I'm sure they can put in there, but you just gotta make sure the software can do what you're wanting it to do.
You know, seeing your point, somebody said, plug in, they get the two on their hire date, which may be right in the same thing. I hire them December 1st. They get two personal days, but you know what I mean? That, that's kind of a bad, that's kind of, works the opposite way. It's not really fair either.
It does, but we're crafting a set-in-stone policy around a what-if on one potential employee, maybe.
That's why I'm not sure what, what's going on right now isn't okay. Give them one on January 1 and one on.
Which is why.
July 1, which we do. That way they at least get one.
Which is why I suggest adding those two holidays in the list, but next to it, awarded as a paid personal day, to be used within the calendar year. Then it, it rolls, just, it would, I don't know why it wouldn't work with the software as far as a holiday.
So you insert the, you get your floating day on Arbor Day, and you get your floating day on Columbus Day?
Yes.
And you can use them as you desire?
Exactly. I mean, they're awarded in lieu of the holidays. So if you're employed by Lincoln County, at that time, you then are awarded that day.
So whatever day they use, it would just...
You can still keep this paragraph in here. Full-time employees shall be granted two paid personal days per calendar year. With, and, well, scratch that sentence where they're both awarded January 1.
One shall be awarded on...
Yeah.
The observed Columbus Day and one shall be awarded on the observed Arbor Day to be used at the employee's discretion.
And shall be forfeited and will not be paid out by the county if...
Not used within the calendar year.
That's going to work on your...
I don't know. It's hard to mix. I would, I would hope so, but I don't.
She'd have to manually enter, like, that they worked on a day that they were gone then. Because they worked Columbus Day, but they took, three weeks later, they took that day off. So we would just have to tell her that we need to put our employee in that they worked seven hours.
I don't know. I'm using that, but I'm safe to mix. Can do it.
Or ground on January 1, ground on January 1.
If you did them on the holiday, then whether they have to be used before the end of the calendar year.
Before, the 31st of December.
Yeah, you could still take them after Christmas, like some people do.
So, so would the lang... So would the lang, I mean, maybe this is what we're saying. A person is entitled to one personal day to be used January 1 to June 30. Okay? Period.
A person is entitled to... Most of the employees use them during the Christmas holiday season. They save them, both of those days, for that time period, when there's virtually no work being done in the courthouse anymore.
Currently, employees have more. They're not supposed to. They're supposed to use the first one before June 30th and they get their second on July 1.
Well, that's the prerogative that this board has, is to change this policy, so...
Well, you said most employees did it that way. I, I didn't say they're not supposed to right now. Would they like to? Yeah, I'm sure they probably would, but...
But your office still remains open, so you have to function during those days.
Right.
Well, if I could say, I agree with Chris. I don't think they should be awarded until the holiday is taken because that's the whole point, is you worked the holiday. I mean, also the point that half the state doesn't run on the holidays, so why even award two personal days, just be closed? But I see the point in being open. So, I say you don't award the holiday till the pay period after the holiday happened because you didn't work it. That's the, that's the perk of getting the personal day, is you worked the holiday. So if we could put into the system, ah, the pay period after the holiday, that's when you get awarded. You use them by the end of the year, just like everything else has to be used by the end of the year.
And I, I agreed with your statement of, if the state's closed, because it's a holiday, the courthouse should be closed. I much would, I would much rather see us align with the state holidays.
So the state is closed, this...
Arbor Day's April, October's closed.
They're closed on Arbor Day.
They are, the state is closed on Arbor Day and Columbus Day.
Oh yeah, they're big about Arbor Day around here.
I don't think they are.
I think they're closed on Arbor Day.
It's a state holiday.
I think it is a state holiday.
The state holiday, the state is closed.
Maybe it would be simpler just to go back to honoring the, all the state holidays.
The state is closed and the DNP is closed.
So if you, if you don't get them till the holiday, do they have to be used by the end of the year? Then there's no personal time to use January 1, April, October.
You solve all your vacation.
You have, just like any other organization, you have your PTO.
Most of the public thinks they're closed anyway, so you're not very busy those days anyhow.
Well, this conversation got bigger than I intended.
Me too, sorry. I just, I just wanted to clarify.
But you have no, it needs to be cleared up.
No, I, I think it's a good conversation.
And this is the problem we have with payroll. Every time somebody had somebody leave or come or whatever, it was like, when do we do these? When do I pay them for them? It's like...
My personal, personal preference... My personal first preference is to align our holiday schedule with the state's holidays. And when the state is closed, we're closed.
I could play how many problems...
And we can get rid of those personal floating days.
How many problems we have when we have something that goes wrong, we cannot call the state for help. Whether that's taking money, whether that's transaction, whether that's...
That was the whole conversation we had about June, June 10.
So for the department head sitting in the room, it sounds like it would simplify things for the majority to align with the state holidays. Is that what I'm hearing?
You know, that's, that's interesting because over the last 15 or 20 years, or however long this has been here, I've never heard it being a problem, Billy.
It doesn't affect my office.
Until right now, when we come up to conversation, now it's a problem?
It's, it's been a topic of conversation the past couple of years.
It has been a topic of conversation that people have not, well, okay, I'll leave it at that.
It's not a problem in my office if the state's closed, but I, I get where yours is, but it, it doesn't affect mine.
Is it a problem in your office, Jason?
No, and I...
And it's not in the sheriffs?
The first preference would be just to have the two days to use whenever they would like, because...
And if we're going to use the two days, I'm fine with that. I just don't think they should be awarded before the holidays even happened.
That would be my second preference.
The whole point is you worked the holiday, so you get the personal day. That's the way I see it.
You know, we're, we're going to make an executive decision. Right, wrong, or indifferent. We're going to, we're going to table this for at least another week. And I'm going to appoint a committee of two people from this board.
We already have a committee for this.
Okay. The committee of two people are going to meet with the elected officials. Think about department here. We're going to meet with the elected officials. And, and I'll talk to Tyler about some other language you have, we have in here about appointed officials, et cetera, and what their powers and duties are. And we're going to try to come back next week and try to have some of these things ironed out. Are there any other concerns other than this that we might have that we need to talk about at this time?
I won't be here next week. I have my tax sale of industry report.
Okay, but you will be here during this week.
Yes, I'm saved for the meeting on Monday. I won't be here.
Right. But hopefully we can get your input so that whatever it might be, we can be passed on that. Thank you. Okay, that's what we're going to do. Thank you.
I'll just make mention of your earlier comments. Talking about five minutes of awkward silence.
And now's the time to get this straight.
Well, I can say it's a lot easier to fix it now than after we've...
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Hey, I have a snoopy. Hey, I have a snoopy right there.
Please, please, we now make these claims our numerical orders.
Try and keep them that length.
They don't end up, oh, wait, down there is Joe's little ticket.
Okay, I'll blame it on Joe.
Okay, and I'll take...
Because I have them ordered. There's only 74 today.
Right, this is, this is the last one for payroll.
This is the last of our payroll.
Oh, there's the clip. I'm going to make that disappear and then you're going to be...
And if I start spreading yours, just push it back.
No, I will.
Appreciate this format better than the former legal.
This fits way better. Let me guess, it's less...
Fair.
Becky, I have payroll.
There's the beginning of claims.
Payroll.
You have it on just the HTML.
Yeah. Last year.
It's 10 o'clock. Next item is a public hearing to receive comments on the Lincoln County 1 and 6-year road plan. Before I open the public hearing, I'm going to make a couple of comments. We'll open the public hearing and that portion of the public hearing for public comment will be specifically that. It will be public comment. It'll be an opportunity for those in the audience, our constituents, to address the board. They can make comments. I can tell you that it's not a time for dialogue between the board and the audience. It's a time to receive your comments. Once that period ends, I will close the public portion of that meeting and the board will start our deliberations. The board has the right to recall an individual that, from the audience that they have for their questions and concerns. We may or may not choose to relay your questions or concerns to the members of the, the Road Committee and/or Roads Department, but we will then be, be making our deliberations amongst ourselves. So, having said that, at 10:01, I will open the public hearing to receive comments on the 1 and 6-year road plan. I can tell you that it's been properly advertised in the paper and, and I think, having said that, I'm going to ask Jason Schultz to introduce himself and the individual with him and to start through that program so that we can have a basis to begin. Jason, please.
Thanks, Joe. Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent.
Brian Gloss, Lincoln County Deputy Highway Superintendent.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Good morning.
We'll go ahead and get started. Everybody have a packet in front of them. And we did hang up a couple of maps in the back there, too. So that's the large 1-year plan and the 6-year plan. Those are pretty difficult to read otherwise, so we just brought large copies of those. So if anybody has questions, they can reference those.
And aren't those also going to be up on our side screens?
We will have those up here, too, but I don't know what you'll be able to see. It might still be a little hard to read.
All right.
So I guess we'll get started here with our, with our road plan.
Starting with the 1 or the 6?
Well, we'll start with the previous year projects, actually.
Very good.
First one would be the previous year project, so looking back at last year's 1-year plan. Couple photos of a project we did complete up for 1 year last year was the O'Fallon's Bridge Replacement Project, so... So then we'll go to the actual list. So here is the list. And like I said, we'll reference the maps if we need to look at location, but, so first off is that O'Fallon project we talked about, 1703. So that one was completed. Garfield Table East, so the mill and re-surface of Garfield Table East. The next one below, West Antelope, and then that other little portion of Garfield Table East. So all those were completed last year under our asphalt program. Next one below is a culvert installation on Paxton Ditch. That one was completed. Johnson Road, that project was completed last year as well, a rebuild of, of a section of that road going up to the north. West State Farm, we had a project we completed there, which was drainage improvements and getting rid of some troubled areas in our, our drainage. North Maxwell Road, so there was a couple miles of a road rebuild up North Maxwell Road. North Game Trail Road, off Highway 30, so that, we rebuilt a mile there to take care of some drainage and water issues there. Gun Club Road, we completed a half-mile section of road there to improve drainage and surface stabilization. Range Road, completed a mile there. And then we get down to our carryover projects. So, North Sudlin Bridge is, is carrying over from last year's 1-year, of course, with that work ongoing. Another one is the North Maxwell Road is a carryover, which we have under contract, expected to begin in May. South Somerset Road, and some of these carryover ones, we'll discuss a little more when we get back to the, to the 1-year. South Somerset Road, so that's a carryover from last year. Work did begin on that, but it is not completed. North Maxwell Road, there's a culvert installation we need to do up there that's carrying over still. And then a mile of a rebuild on Power Road, which will carry over to this year. So now we'll move on to our 1-year projects. And speaking of Sudlin Bridge, there's a few photos of the progress of some of the Sudlin Bridge project up there as well, so...
Very pleased with how that's coming along?
Yes, yeah, it's coming along very nice. So, I think that upper right corner was taken actually about a, just a few weeks into the project. You can see the whole bridge is still remaining there. And then the upper left was, after they completed a lot of the demolition in that first phase, and then down below, you can see the south abutment, the first bent, and they're working on the second one there. So that one was actually taken a few months ago, I believe. So they've made even a lot of progress since these, so... Okay, so on to the 1-year. And I'll just read the descriptions through here. The Sudlin North Bridge, so replacing the bridge with a new structure over the North Platte River on North Prairie Trace. Everybody's aware of that one. Next project, the North Maxwell Road. Next project, the North Maxwell Road, 2203. The milling and two-inch overlay for approximately 11 miles, so starting at the Maxwell Village limits and to the end of the asphalt. 2301, the South Somerset, so that's another carryover. Like we said, we did start that project. We started that at the West Lake Road there, and we did get that project completed down to Watts. So, this year, we still have, that's five miles, so we still have another five miles beginning at Watts going south to Lone Star.
Backtracking to the North Maxwell Road project.
Yeah.
That $1.55 million project cost, is that last year's fiscal year budget or what you're anticipating for?
For this year's.
Okay.
For what we have this fiscal year still, yeah. And that'll actually tie into a couple other projects we have here as well for asphalt. Yeah, and feel free to stop me if you guys have questions on any of these. So, South Somerset, like I said, we were halfway through that project and we should complete that this year as well. I guess when we talk years, it's a little different because our road plan year doesn't exactly coincide with our fiscal year, right? Because our road plan we're doing now, so it pretty much covers the calendar year. And our fiscal year, of course, is split July 1, right? So. Our next project is that carryover project, the culvert installations up there on North Maxwell Road ahead of that future extension of the asphalt up there. And really have not heard any update from anybody on that as far as their timing or what their plan is up there, so I will update you as soon as I do get an update from them. Next project is that Power Road carryover, and that's one mile of rebuild and drainage stabilization, new gravel from South Prairie Trace to South Bubble Road on Power Road. Next one is 2306. So, that is the, it's North Buffalo Road. So, that's drainage stabilization and new gravel surface of two and a half miles, pretty much in its entirety from North River Road all the way up to Highway 97. So, it's kind of a mixed bag of things. You have slough areas that are pretty unstable, and then you have other very sandy areas, so it's kind of a mixed bag of things there. But that is in our one-year plan, is to get up and take care of that section this year.
Makes me very happy that this is on the one-year.
Yeah, I think we had it on the six last year.
We had that conversation as part of our meeting.
So, yeah, that one will be a nice one to get done. Next project, 2401. So, this is a project we actually added in this year. It's the Indian Hills subdivision. So, it's a two-inch overlay of 3.6 miles, including all the roads and cul-de-sacs. So, we added that project in there. We added quite a few subdivisions actually in our plan this year to the one and the six, just because we're to the point we need to start addressing the condition of some of those, so. So, this would be one of the first ones we added in there. Then the one down below, 2402, is Hillcrest subdivision, and it's Phase One. So, after our assessments there, and I do have maps if we need to look at those, we'll be probably discussing this after the hearing as well, some of these in more detail, but it's not the entire subdivision of Hillcrest.
Okay.
You can see the roads listed there, which ones they are.
Sorry to interrupt. I know that you and I have had conversations, but I just want to make sure that as we're doing this and we're looking at what the two-inch overlay does, that we're taking a good look at the drainage situation, because there are areas particularly in Indian Hills where water sits, and I don't want that to be a consistent problem to where it devastates the road base.
Yes, yeah. And we did see some of the same thing that you're talking about there with some areas in Indian Hills. I think most of what we saw as far as drainage is relating to like turf buildup over time, and I think the two-inch overlay will address a lot of that. Now, if we end up with anything after the overlay that needs to be addressed to take care of the drainage, we'll definitely look at that and take care of that, too.
Thank you, Jason.
That's in the Indian Hills subdivisions, right?
Yeah, pretty much when we're talking any of these subdivisions, really, it's, as you can see, that's where the pavements fail in the worst, is where these spots are that are holding some water. Some of these areas, I guess it is worth noting, too, that when we're in there doing these, you know, some of the remedies to that water issue might be to trim some of that dirt and sod buildup away from the shoulders within our right-of-way, so it might affect some yards and lawns. I know some people have sprinkler heads out in the right-of-ways, so.
That's where good communication with the property owners comes in.
Exactly.
And they need to understand, I mean, that's part of having those roads dedicated to the county, is there's right-of-way, and we have to do what we need to do to make sure that the road is taken care of, so.
And we will do that. If we have any work like that that we need to do, we will contact the property owners ahead of time and.
I'd expect nothing less.
Work it out.
Jason, back to the Hillcrest subdivision. It's going to happen in two phases, and not the whole subdivision is in poor shape. Last time I was up there driving around, some of the roads are in very good condition.
Correct. So, yeah, after we did our assessment of it, I think the North Ridge Circle Drive is the worst one, so that's the big loop on the west side of the subdivision. And then also the crossover roads, I guess I call them, the Prairie Lane Drive and Cedar Lane Drive that are connecting the other portions of the subdivision are in pretty bad shape. Now, those other two, I don't have them off the top of my head, the names of those, but the other two long straight roads that are on the east side of that subdivision are in pretty good shape. And they're not in need of an overlay at this point. Maybe some maintenance work coming up in the next couple of years, but as far as our projects and our asphalt overlay plan, those don't need to be in it as of right now, in our opinion. More questions on those two? And the next project that's in our major asphalt overlay program is 2206, North River Road. So, this one has been on here for a couple of years now. In the six-year, we actually moved it up to the one-year this year. So, it's a two-inch mill and overlay for 14 and a half miles. So, we did break this project up a little bit from the past. Previously, it was the entire 17 and a half miles going all the way from Highway 83 past Hershey all the way to the end of the asphalt. So, we broke this project up, and this first one here, 2206, is the main bulk of it from Highway 83.
To Hershey.
All the way to North Hershey Road.
That will involve probably some shouldering in places, won't it?
Yes, yeah, there will be. And there's also some patchwork that we'll have to do. There's a couple of subgrade issues on that road that we would need to get done before this overlay project.
A lot of potholes forming.
Yeah.
Deep ones, so.
But we did move that up, so I think that's the next major project we're looking at on our asphalt overlay program.
And the remaining stretch from North Hershey Road to the end of the asphalt is on the one, it's on the six-year plan?
It's on the six-year, yeah. And it's actually.
I'm advocating that that gets addressed and put onto the one-year plan next year. That way, we can finish the entire project.
And that one is actually in a lot better condition than a lot of the roadway from 83 to North Hershey, and it's in very similar condition to North Hershey Road, which we don't have on our six-year yet, but that project would probably tie together very nicely. They're similar conditions, so given, I guess, our timing on that, they should fit together pretty well, so. Next project, 2407, is a small project on Hanson Hill Road down east of Cut Creek Road, so there's about a half a mile there of just some earthwork, drainage, and stabilization. And the last project here on our one-year is 2413, so it is Heritage Drive, Valley Drive. So, that's out on State Farm, just east of South Buffalo. So, it's just elevating the road that's there, stabilizing and just improving the drainage and new gravel surface, so. And that's all the roads right there. I guess I shouldn't. So, here is the main map that shows all the projects. It's a little tough to see, but I guess you can basically see all the projects that are just in black numbers are the ones that are carried over onto the one-year from last year. The ones that are highlighted in yellow boxes are the ones that are new to the one-year this year, just so everybody can reference those quickly. And then we do have, I guess, location maps of all the projects if anybody wants to. We can go through those quick, but this is the North Sudlin Bridge. Everybody's familiar with where that project location is at, just north of Sudlin. This is the Maxwell Road project. So.
And that's scheduled for May?
May, yeah, completed by the end of June. Somerset Road. So, this map shows the completed portion in black, and then the blue section is the section that we need to finish this year.
I've had a lot of very positive feedback from the people that live out there and haul a lot of farm products up and down that road. The elevating, the widening has really been a big bonus for that community.
I think we've really seen the benefit of that, too, through the winter, because most winters, that's a problem area for drifting and trying to keep the road open, and not only that, but maintaining it. And this winter, I think our maintenance and snow clearing and everything else has gone down dramatically on that section, so.
And prior to that, I don't think we could keep a motor grader out there enough to keep up with the blowouts and the issues that were caused by it being recessed so far, so good job there.
Yeah, I think that section's a good testament to the work the guys are doing on the road building crew, and that's why we want to push and continue to do that, you know, so. North Maxwell Road. So, this is just that culvert project that needs to go under North Maxwell. Kind of rehashing everything here, but I probably should have clicked through these as we're talking about them. Power Road, so that just shows the location just south of Southern Reservoir on Power Road for that mile. North Buffalo, so that's all the way from North River all the way up to Highway 97. Indian Hills. So, I just highlighted the entire subdivision there, because that's our plan, is to try to do that in one lump. Then Hillcrest, so here you can see the map of Hillcrest showing the North Ridge Circle Loop and then the two connector roads coming over, so that's that project. It does not include.
Not Mill Park.
Mill Park or Hillcrest Drive, yeah. There's North River Road, so like I said, that project stops at the North Hershey Road now, so Highway 83 all the way. Hanson Hill, so that's that short half-mile down there. And this is the Heritage and Valley, just down south, the south side of town there. So, any questions on any of the one-year?
Let's, I'm going to hold those for right now. We're going to go to the six-year if we can, and then we'll bring our questions back later to the board, how's that?
Okay.
Give the public a chance to.
You betcha.
Your comments from them.
On to the six-year. So, first project is the Suburban Road, 1615 project. It's an overlay north, and it's from the intersection of Eschelman crossing 83 to Washboard Road. So, that project's on our list that needs to be done. Eugene Avenue, that's from the city limits to South Buffalo, so that's a pretty extensive project we have on our radar as of right now, the widening of all the right-of-way, road widening, probably doing a drainage study. And then the milling and overlay, drainage improvements, and I'm not sure if we look into that one a little bit more, that that might not expand to more than just a mill and overlay as far as redoing that, depending on our drainage study and everything else. But we'll have to see what happens when that gets moved up and we start that planning and engineering.
And that was Eugene?
Yeah.
Okay. I couldn't hear over the background noise, so.
Next one, 1704, Wells Road, so that's replacing a wooden bridge with a culvert. That one's been on here for a while, but it's actually a pretty decent condition wooden bridge, so we really, with the traffic that goes across it, we haven't seen the need to pull it up yet. Probably the next couple, you could say that about Box Elder, I think is the same thing, wooden bridge replaced with culverts, but still functioning very well. Ridge Road, that one, I think that one is in a little worse condition, so that one is probably the one out of all the bridges that would get pulled up the soonest if possible. But we do need to probably do a hydraulic study on that one to size the culverts and make sure we're good there. Next project is 1909, Hanson Hill Road. So, that's another bridge with a larger culvert, and we also need a study done on it as well.
Is that sort of what you're doing on the one-year? Or is this a different area on Hanson Hill?
Yeah, that's a different area, so. The Hanson Hill that's on the one-year is more or less, I guess I'll let Brian explain that one.
I'd call it bank stabilization. There's an area where water's continued to cut right next to the road, and it just has a straight bank, and Chase has got with the landowner and going to borrow a hill from them and push up and make more of a functional slope that we can get grass to grow on and get the water to run somewhere else. We'll have to haul some dirt to that, too, as well, to fill the hole in, but it's just kind of one of them things that we took dirt up there and dumped over the edge, kind of kicked that can down the road long enough. We just need to slope it and get it right.
Get it done right.
So, it can last long time.
Yep. Then the next one is 2204, so that's a major asphalt project, North Brady Road, so that's the mill and overlay for 14 miles, starting at the Brady Village limits and continuing to the end of the asphalt there. Next project, 2205, Wild Horse Road, so that's a two-inch mill and overlay. Well, it's on here as an overlay, but it would probably end up having to be a mill as well from North Brady to the intersection of Spadall. 2308, South Hershey Dickens Road, so that's the drainage improvements, roadway widening, and then the milling and overlay from Highway 23 all the way up to. and then the milling and overlay from Highway 23 all the way up to Oregon Trail Road, so pretty much the extent of that road.
Entire road, yes.
Yeah, that one's a pretty, a major project. It's, we've got a few things in the works on that right now, but I guess nothing to report yet. 2310, South Game Trail Road, so that's a, just a drainage stabilization of rebuild of one mile between Highway 23 and Nelson Road down the south portion of the county. Next one, 2311, is East Slant Road, so that's replacing the existing culverts with a couple more culverts and with headwalls, improving the drainage. 312 is South Dickens Road, so that is more or less a road rebuild down there of six 2315, North Birdwood Road. That one is the rebuilding of that portion between West North River and West Stark Road. 2316 is West State Farm. So this is a section over there between South Hershey Dickens and South Range Road, so that would be just a rebuild, drainage stabilization, new gravel. Then we get a couple more of our subdivisions are in here that we added this year to the six-year. 2403, Fairway Estate, so that's 1.25 miles of overlay, and that's the entire subdivision. 2404 is Prairie View Acres West, so that is .9 miles of overlay, and that's the west portion of that subdivision that's out there off of Highway 83. Next one, 2405, is Calvary Hills, so that's 1.2 miles of overlay. That's the entire subdivision there. So I guess we felt these three subdivisions would need to get on our six-year plan because they were the, probably the next in our priority list after Indian Hills and Hillcrest.
With Calvary Hills, does that include that second entrance into that subdivision, or no?
No, no. This is just the overlay of the existing roadways and...
Can you...
The... So I had a few conversations with some folks about the second entrance in there, and believe the county does have right-of-way to the edge of the current property owners that are within the subdivision. But there is a piece of property between that and Twin Lakes right-of-way. So there is private land between there for an extension, so if we were...
I didn't realize that. I thought it was all platted and we had the right-of-way, so...
No, there's just a little section of right-of-way that extends out to the edge of the property owners in that subdivision. From there, there's another wedge of property that's private land between that right-of-way, and so we have a gap there, more or less, that we would have to conquer to be able to do that.
Okay. Worth of further discussion?
Next project we added was the 2406, so that's the remaining three miles of North River Road from North Hershey, going west to the end of the asphalt there at Birdwood. 2408, so we added this project this year. It's Fletcher Road, so it's drainage stabilization, new gravel, 2.3 miles between Ingham Road and Brady Moorfield Road, so down far, almost to the county line on Brady Moorfield. 2409, Wetun Road, so this is drainage stabilization, new gravel, two miles from Garfield Table north to the county line road. 2410 is the next one, Merriam Road, so that's drainage stabilization, new gravel for two miles from State Farm, south to East Platby Road. 2411 is Fairview Road, so drainage stabilization, new gravel, one mile, Fairview from east county line, west to Svedal, and then one mile north of Fairview, so it's two miles in total, but encompasses two different roads there. And 2412 is Nelson Road, so that is the drainage stabilization, new gravel of four miles from South Somerset to South Game Trail. And one of those problematic roads for us that we've done some work on that needs to get in our plan to be done in our road building efforts.
Jason, I appreciate the update. I think what I'm going to do at this time is I'll ask you to stay close, you guys, when you ask the public to come forward and address the board with comments or questions, actually comments. And I think because of the number of the people in the room, I'm not going to necessarily limit it. Would be nice if we could stay to five minutes or so. If I need to, if somebody starts running a little long, I may have to use the chair's prerogative, but I know you're all going to use good judgment. So, having said that, anyone that would like to make a public comment, please come forward. Identify yourself, sign in, and we'd be glad to hear from you. I'm Jim Boyle. Just a request for a rebuild on North Washboard... Just for a formality, please. If you could sign in.
Okay.
You don't have to, but I'd kind of like to make sure that usually the people commenting are relevant, are Lincoln County residents, and just kind of give me an idea where you're at so I can know where we're looking at on the map. Just a request on a rebuild on North Washboard Road. I guess rebuild kind of covers the whole thing, the way you guys talk about it. It's culverts and road bed and drainage, and just could use some assistance.
Jim, could you, can I ask a question?
You may.
How far, what are we talking, miles, or from what road to what road?
Well, from North Washbo, or North River Road up to Suburban.
To Suburban.
I guess I don't go down south, so I'm not sure what the south end. I'm sure that the north end is bad, the south end isn't much better. It's been a while, I suppose, since it's been rebuilt.
That asphalt's really bad, just south of the river.
Well, yeah. And that's all we have. And what was named that road again?
What's that?
What was named that road again?
North Washboard.
I know, I know the road. I was trying to make that point for you.
It was named appropriately.
Oh, oh.
North Washboard, North Washboard, North Washboard, North Washboard, North Washboard, North Washboard.
Please. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is Patrick Tomlinson. I live on 5993 North Washboard Road. My concerns are about the same as Jim's, but my major concern is our culverts and my ditch. I have water sitting in that ditch all the time. And my concern is the mosquitoes, and we do have out there. I've had a horse that died with West Niles at one time. It's been a while, though. My wife, she goes out there and plants flowers. She goes out there in the evening, and she gets carried away with the mosquitoes. But the main thing is, well, for me, is the culvert. The road does need it bad, too. That's good for me.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, man.
Name's Ted Jedrussik, and I'm 6041 North Washboard Road. And diddle for me on everything the last two just said.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Really appreciate you guys coming in and raising the concern because we, from time to time, we get phone calls. Not a whole lot of people attend the actual public hearing on the one and six, and it does carry some weight, so...
Now, the frost going out now, it's pretty bad up there.
It's, for the next month or so, it's going to be really boggy on that. I've driven that stretch many a time.
Yeah.
I'm very familiar with what you're talking and the problems throughout the entire summer with water.
I think at one time, they did something down closer to the creek, to Birdwood Creek there.
We worked...
I think they raised that.
There was some work done on the creek, just even two years ago, cleaning that up.
Right.
Which I think helped a little bit, but that area just has a high-water table, and any work that we can do, Jason, on even just maintaining those ditches this year until we can get it appropriately addressed and planned is much appreciated.
I think we're about out of gravel on the north end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
My name is Michael Cook. I live at 1906 West Eugene Avenue in North Platte. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the Board of Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak concerning the one- and six-year county road plan. I have been presenting the cause for moving the issue of Eugene Avenue from the six-year to the one-year schedule for much-needed repairs, improvements for the path. I believe that everyone in this hearing knows how much these improvements are needed. Eugene Avenue is now a patchwork of short-term repairs and soon will be beyond drivable condition even with these repairs. I have come to realize that the potential of realistic improvement to Eugene Avenue has two basic problems that are restricting this issue. The first is the desire of the commission that the city of North Platte will ultimately annex the surrounding properties, and the burden of improving Eugene Avenue will fall to the city and its taxpayers. The second is the pressure to support other projects when those wanting those improvements can fund some of the project or influence the commission by their perceived value in getting their project moved to the top of the list. The first issue speaks for itself. An example of the second issue is the quarter of a mile of improvement to North Maxwell Road that includes major drainage improvements. This project was never on either the one- or six-year road improvement plan until it was needed to complete the improvements of the remaining portion of the road to access the new private golf course. Even though the owners of the golf course are contributing money to this project, I question how the commission can justify using county tax monies for this project. Why should those of us taxpayers that live on and others that use Eugene Avenue pay for the improvements to this portion of North Maxwell Road? How is this justified while continuing to leave Eugene Avenue in this deteriorated condition? County Road Superintendent Schultz commented in the Saturday edition of the North Platte Telegraph, 224/2024, further shows the county's attitude towards the much-needed improvements to Eugene Avenue. He stated, "No movement or update from a narrow county section with drainage ditches might happen. I guess Eugene will continue to be worn out, an unsafe road for those that use it." Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Beautiful day.
It is.
South crossing the road.
Wait 24 hours, it will change.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Eric Seacrest. I live at 109 South Maloney Drive. And first of all, I want to congratulate you and you guys and your staff and taxpayers for making real progress, again, for roads all through, for county roads all through this county. And that is about as good as we can expect, that you're being equitable, you're making improvements in all parts of the county. And thank God we don't have to come in here again and talk about improving this Southernland River Bridge. That is behind us. Don't have any projects like that on your list, again, that have been sitting there for 20 years, and that shows what persistence can do. And so I congratulate you. I want to join fellow county residents, Mike, in urging the attention to Eugene Avenue, primarily because it's not safe. Obviously, you know about it. We've talked about it year after year. It's not getting safer. In fact, it's getting worse, and it's due to get to a point where you just have to deal with it. And Eugene is fast approaching that situation. I want to congratulate you for dealing with the North River Road before it got in that And finally, I'd like to urge that you keep up your efforts and maybe include something in your six-year plan to interchange through the interstate somewhere west of North Platte at Hershey. There's 13 miles between the two interchanges. The growing part of North Platte to the southwest could definitely use another way out in the case there was ever a need for an evacuation. The current lack of a way out in that area causes all sorts of adverse traffic and distant mileage to get where people are going in the growing part of the city of North Platte. And as you all well know, you have endorsed an inland port authority on the Hershey, and it could use another way to get to that, so we're not driving across local roads. I know probably Chairman Pootley or myself won't live to see that, but I think we would be very interested in seeing some progress on that project. Thank you for that.
Yeah. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Seacrest.
Anybody else?
Anybody else wish to make comments from the public? I'm gonna close the public hearing. That includes the comments and input from the public unless you want to make a closing statement with regards, while it's still in a public hearing, before we start our addressing your concerns.
Yes, I would, please. So Brian noticed there's one project that did, that got left off the list in the summary. And it was the last project that we actually added this year. Six-year. It's Project 2413, and it is Sarben Road, and it's actually, it's on the six-year map over there. And it is a 4.8-mile stretch, Sarben Road from Highway 30 and then going all the way to the county line. So there is that mill and overlay project there that did not, apologize, did not make it on my summary for some reason, so.
Cost estimate?
Appreciate it, thank you.
715.
It is on this page.
It's on there.
On the bottom, it's just not on the detail.
Yeah, I was following the summary, so I skipped it. So I didn't have a summary for it, so. They said it's on the map and on the list, but just wanted to mention that before we can.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the update, Jason.
We will now close the public input portion of the public hearing. I'll close the public hearing now. It's for this board to have discussion with, and you can back up, Brian, with road personnel. Questions, comments? I'm gonna open it up to my colleagues.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could have just a minute. The one and six, these are major road projects, correct? These aren't just maintenance issues that arise from time to time, because I do have one for East Ailer Road that I want to talk with you about. There's a lot of truck traffic going to the feedlot up north that we need to get addressed, but I think that's just going to be a maintenance issue. The one and six, for clarification to the public, but those that may be watching online or read about this in the newspaper, Lincoln County has over 1,641 miles of county roads that you guys worked very hard to triage and address. And I appreciate the work that you and your crews do throughout the course of the year to put this together. This is not an easy task. Triageing roads and the demands on all 1,600-plus miles of road is a tall order. And so I just want to make sure that that's annotated for the record, the amount of appreciation that I have for you guys. We heard from the public on Washboard, I do agree that that probably needs to get looked at as far as a six-year project. The other is Eugene Avenue. In my opinion, we've kicked the can down the road long enough on Eugene. We need to have some meaningful conversations with the city. I have concerns about widening the road and what that does as far as opening up truck traffic going through, so I don't know if part of that discussion needs to include a roundabout or what that looks like. I don't know. But whatever we can do to mitigate that truck traffic, but it's something that does need addressed. Yes, it's gonna get annexed by the city, and yes, that is, that is a, who pays for it? And just being good stewards in the community and the taxpayer dollars, ultimately, it's all the taxpayers' money, and we just need to work to find a meaningful solution in fairly rapid order to get this addressed, because it is becoming unsafe. It has been unsafe. It's becoming to a point of deterioration that it needs addressed. So that's my ask over the course of this year, that we start having those conversations in our midst.
And I think we, at the Roads Department, we agree with everything you just said, Chris, and it's up in our priority list to get things going. I think it's a perfect project that we can possibly co-op with the city on, so we can try to get both sections of that. So I do have it on my list of getting with the city to start those talks and see what we can do, so.
In that regard, some of that grant money that's out there via Safe Streets and other --
Safe Streets for All.
And other sources certainly is something that, certainly, there have been some discussions about accessing some of those funds. This would be a great spot to incorporate that with the city.
The last comment that I have, and our good friend, Mr. Seacrest brought it up, was looking at, in our six-year plan, a west interchange. I think it's probably premature to incorporate something like that into a, into an actual six-year, trying to seek funding for feasibility studies. And I would rather see that run its course and professional help identify if that is needed, and if so, where, before we actually incorporate that into a plan. But I do want to, just for the record and for Mr. Seacrest's certification, because I know he was on the initial stakeholders conversation. It's of high importance for me, and I know that Commissioner Hugley's on that committee with me, working on this process. These conversations that we're having as far as transportation to service the inland port and connecting our infrastructure, they are gonna be part of a comprehensive plan that the county is currently working through, that process now. So I'm looking forward to seeing what that, what final product comes out of this entire process.
Yeah, I think one thing to note, too, I guess, is, like you said, these are major projects, right? We have a lot of other miles of road that, some of them might have some really bad spots in them. So what this doesn't encompass is our, we do have a budget line item for patch and repair of roads. So if you have roads like that, that, you know, we are planning on doing some of that work this fiscal year still. Once we get done with this, then we will look at all those sections that we need repair work done on and reevaluate those, just like we did all these projects, and get some work going there. So I guess that's a good thing for the public to know, is this, just because it's not, your road isn't on this list, if there's a bad spot, you know, we're, we're still gonna get to those in a prioritized order, so.
There's no shortage, there's absolutely no shortage of roads that need addressed, but we all know that. So anybody can bang the drum for their favorite project, and I think the board, the time I've been here, has done a good job of not doing that, trying to recognize that others have needs as well. But because of the fact that we're always playing catch-up, there's always gonna be roads that I could certainly agree with someone's petition that we get as an A-list, but they can't all be on the A-list. But I want to comment, something that's gone for months about the North Maxwell Road. That road's been in disrepair for a long time, and having, being a sandheller and using that road occasionally from up on the Garfield table, that road doesn't stop at a new golf project. That road goes all the way up to where some of us Houdal folks live, and there's a lot of people that utilize that road. It's not just for the sake of one project, and I think that's fair to set the record straight. The road doesn't end there, it's simply that the pavement ends there. And why it ended there many, many years ago, I have no idea. I wish it were going all the way to Garfield, but we obviously, we've got other projects that, I mean, there's no way we'd want to take that on today. But it's just one example of a road that, whether it was on everybody's radar or not, certainly has been in disrepair for a long time. So I'm glad to see it's finally gonna get some attention.
I'd echo that, Commissioner Williams. I think that's a major artery for our agricultural producers.
It is, and I've used it many times with stock trailer and pickup and tractors, and you get to the point where you measure whether you can take the beating to go all across there or go around. So that's, I know that from living up there for 40 years. So, thank you.
And as a member of the Roads Committee, I think it would be a good time to reiterate what was mentioned earlier. A lot of the roads that have been rebuilt thus far, the rewards are immense. It's unfortunate they were, we were just that far behind in getting it done, but hats off to your crews that have worked on those, because there's been major, major improvements the time I've been sitting at this table, and very much appreciated. And it saves the county money in the long run. So, thanks.
Well, take, and I think the only one in, well, the one person that I recognize in the room that will really appreciate the comment, because we've had this conversation 34, 35 more years ago, and that's Eric Seacrest. When we talk about all the work that needs to be done and everything, I just wish that we could all go back and look in the, you know, 80s, early 80s, at where we were at with our road department and our equipment. You absolutely wouldn't believe it. We go even further, and let's talk about the bridge situation. Would we would have a book, single-spaced, this thick, of not just deficient but unsafe bridges throughout the county? Hundreds of bridges. We don't see that anymore. We see a few bridges and some culvers. So it is a, you know, it's sort of like the turtle and the hare. You know, you just have to be persistent, as somebody says. And, Mr. Cook, thank you. We just have to be consistent. We're talking about the overpass at Sutherland. Just have to be consistent and persistent. And can I appreciate your comment? Because there have been times here where we all would have wanted to really say, well, do you realize how long I've been waiting for that in this district? We've been pretty good about that. We've been pretty good about respecting all of our colleagues on this Commission, so I appreciate it. So, those are my comments. Any other questions, comments for these gentlemen before we take an action on this one and six-year road program?
I would just like to thank Brian, Jason, your whole crew out there. Lots of good conversations around this table today. Most of those conversations happened, I too served with Commissioner Woodruff on your Roads Committee. And I think if we took a poll of the general public, everybody would want attention given to their road. You guys have the tough job of assessing and putting a priority to the, to that list. And that's very tough, because you're never gonna make everybody happy all the time. And I feel, in the years I've been sitting here, you guys have done a fantastic job of prioritizing and getting the attention to where it needs to be first and foremost, and also work within the constraints of our budget. So I appreciate that. And the input from everybody in this room, there was not one false statement made here today. There are a lot of concerns in our county.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? I think it's that time, rule call, vote, please, ma'am. Are approving the one and --
Motion?
You didn't tell, I'm not too excited.
No, you, so you --
Mr. Chairman, I think you're asking for a motion, are you not?
I am.
Okay, good. I would make a motion that we adopt the one and six-year plan as presented by the Roads Department.
Second.
So it's a good idea, before we vote, to have the motion that we're voting on, isn't it? Thank you for reminding. Any discussion or questions regarding the motion? Now, Tammy, can we have a rule call?
Woodruff?
Aye.
Uller?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You guys might as well just stay there, huh?
Okay, do you want to decide what is one of these?
Oh, yeah.
What mile marker do you live at on 83?
What's that?
What mile marker do you live at on 83?
Who wants to know?
Just curious.
Figured that's what it was.
Oh, we all signed, okay.
My wife's home, she'll handle it. I don't know, Larry.
Thank you.
Was that, was that not there even this weekend? Or last Friday?
Yeah. Well, there's two, two separate projects going right now.
Just a little over 10:30 now, it's 11:03. Our next item is to discuss, consider setting a date to accept bids for the Lincoln County Asphalt Project, LC DOR 2024-1. Jason, please.
So we would like to set a date to bid another asphalt project, so this would be a continuation of our 2324 fiscal year asphalt program. Given our first project of the North Maxwell Road, and then we see some other needs that we just went through in our, our one and six-year plan, and we would like to bid a project of some overlay of some subdivisions. Project being 2401-1. And it would consist of Indian Hills subdivision and Hillcrest subdivision, Phase 1.
Suppose it's a good thing we passed the plan as it was, huh?
Yeah.
Quick question before we get into the weeds on this.
Yep.
Do, and maybe you're gonna say this, and I'm getting ahead of you, but is it prudent to let these separately in case for budget issues, you can pick one or the other?
Well, yeah, so I guess, given our budget and what we have remaining, trying to estimate the cost of the project, we did do something along that lines.
Okay, I'm getting ahead of you, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's a good question. Yeah.
So are you in two different phases, perhaps, or is that what we're saying?
Well, so in the, in the two sheets that I handed out there.
Yep.
The first sheet, we'd like to bid the entirety of Hillcrest, Phase 1, that's identified there. And then in the second sheet, Indian Hills, you can see the yellow is the base bid, and then we'd like to bid an alternate for the project that will include the final remaining roads in Indian Hills.
What's in blue?
That's, that's the alternate that we'd like to bid, so.
So Hillcrest would be identified as bid? Hillcrest would be identified separately as a bid, and then Indian Hills would be identified as?
Well, the base bid would be everything in yellow on both sheets.
On both?
Yep. So that would be the base bid, and then we'd have an alternate for the blue in Indian Hills.
But you don't anticipate a problem getting a number bigger than, that would gobble up both?
No, I, I think we can get the entire project done, given our, our budget and what we have available. It just, it all depends on the prices that are, that come into us, so.
You know, it would be a time saver if you thought there was any risk, if you segregated it out and had it as a separate bid, but I, I understand on the aggregate, maybe you'd get a better price. Is that what you're?
Yeah, and I, the base bid, everything in yellow, we're confident.
Okay.
We can get that done.
I'm beating a dead horse here, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Not, not really.
And then the alternate one is what we would like to get done as well, that we feel may be within our budget. It just depends on.
But you're sure that the yellow is within the budget at this point?
Yes.
Okay. And that's for this fiscal year before the end of June, correct?
Correct.
What's remaining in our asphalt overlay program?
Yes, and some other funds that are out there.
Yes.
I would just hate to see the whole thing get shot down.
No, no. No, and that's why we wanted to do it this way.
If we didn't fragment, fragment the two, because logistically, they don't really work anyway, so I don't know if it would matter, but anyway.
No, and that's why we kind of prioritize where we put the alternate one, because some of the alternate one areas aren't in as high of need as --
I would move to set March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four at ten a.m. to receive and consider asphalt overlay bids for the enumerated projects as presented by the road department, specifically Hillcrest portion, a portion of Hillcrest, and as well as a portion of Indian Hills in, in two parcels.
Second. Motion and second. Discussion or questions? Rule call, vote, Tammy, please.
Weems?
Aye.
Brunns?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Woller?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you. Things aren't so long-winded, we've been done an hour ago.
This is the road department meeting, isn't it?
Yeah.
Going to be a good year for Lincoln County roads.
Mr. Bullock, are there any questions or need for a close session?
Nope.
Okay. Any comments or concerns from department heads or elected officials? Because we were short on, well, you know what? I am going to give a committee report, okay? While we're signing claims. Talking about Region Two Human Services and Region Two Services.
Thank you, Jason and Brian.
That's why the bodies I sit on, we contribute about a third of their funds. It's, I think, eighteen counties. But I'm going to hand this thing around, just so you can look. I want to give some numbers. We, for example, emergency community support, this is things with our, let's see which one this is, Region Two. So these would be, somebody's having a mental problem, emergencies. There were a total of twenty-three this last month, twenty in Lincoln County, two in Keith and one in McPherson. Referrals to those services, there were a total of thirteen, twelve came from Lincoln County, one from Red Willow County. If you have an individual that's on a twenty-four-hour crisis hotline or team, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, that diverts so many really bad things from happening with people with mental health. And by that, I, I'm talking about saving lives, okay? I was hoping that there would be some more time, but I just wanted to tell you that out of Lincoln County's proportion to that is seventy-two thousand. And that goes on about a five million dollar services that we receive, most of those funded by the federal and state government. If we needed to, well, we do need to, if we had to fund those by ourselves, we can all see that we don't have those kinds of funds. We can bang for the buck is incredible. And those are, those are just services to individuals I'm talking about. I'm not talking about, and I'm not even talking about, for example, the Opportunity Center, which is another part of this organization that we sit on, talk about human services and those with developmental disabilities. And I just look at the payroll, but look at what good that does to so many of our most vulnerable. I think, I think we've all had the opportunity over time to, to see some of the things they do, some of their work programs. I mean, we, we keep families, families. And I think that we need to feel proud as, as a group that we do participate in that and that we're a vital part of that. Another thing has to do with EPCs, Emergency Protective Custodes. We probably get, yeah, I'm going to be wrong on these numbers, but maybe twenty or twenty-five calls for EPCs a month. Of those EPCs, we are able to work with the individuals, with both the professionals that we have on staff or other areas. You know, I talked about this individual, I won't say her name, that's on a twenty-four-hour crisis, get some help out to those people immediately and take those, maybe twenty-five or thirty EPC requests down to five or six or seven. Last month, there were four from Lincoln County, one from Hitchcock, one from Dundee, one from Chase, one from Dawson, and one from Keith. Very, it's, it's very unusual that Hitchcock, Chase, or Dundee has any, but they did have one. So, you know, that's, that's a big deal when you take a community that's got a couple, two, three hundred people. That's, that's a big deal. Lutheran family, Lutheran family services that are in this community, it goes on, let's see, I can't point you, I was trying to see a number here. I do know that we, we serve fourteen families and, and not all of these are from Lincoln County, but a good number of them are with our Boys Town Support because that's something that's here locally. Family skill builders, or five, five families served here locally. And this just goes on and on and on. But I did want to mention that, all of the good things that Region Two Services are doing, we're seeing a projected twenty-three million dollar cut across all of the regions this coming year. I'm not sure how that's going to play out. I have spoken with our senator and our, I can tell you that our local senator's been very, very supportive of, of our region. I can also tell you that Region Two is by far the most efficient region of any of the five across the state. And you wonder, how can that be when we're out here so remote and we have to take people so far away to get these services and we're still that much more efficient than, say, for example, in Omaha, where they might have five providers within a five-mile range, for example. So it just speaks, I think, well to all the things they do. My committee report, anybody else would like to make a committee report?
I would like to make a report, Building and Grounds, and a lot of this legwork has been done by my fellow Building and Grounds committee person, Commissioner Woller. But on the emergency management building, first the bad news. The load limit on the roof was designed initially at twenty-five pounds for snow. David Honnott, the city says it has to be thirty pounds.
Which building we talking about?
The steel building, we just-
The emergency management building?
That's the bad-
It does, that's the minimum.
Yeah, the good news is they're making some changes to that, and right now, the change order will have no extra cost. I hope that continues to be the-
Let me make a comment if I can. How could it be twenty-five pounds? I remember at the table, looking at him and says, are you sure that it has to comply with all state legal and federal codes, including loading?
And that's what we did.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
And that's been corrected.
Thank you very much.
So that's, the better news is that it may not have to be an increase in the expense. The second meeting we had just last week was with the roads department and with Clary and their concrete man out of McCook. Looks like we're going to be able to do the little bit of slope and the drainage at Building and Grounds expense and their efforts. The roads department has agreed to do some of the site work. And it looks like, correct me if I'm wrong, Michaela, but maybe somewhere towards four to six weeks from now, concrete weather permitting will be done out there at the site.
Alls we need-
Done?
Concrete.
Concrete.
Oh, thank you.
Alls we're waiting for is, because of the changes in the load bearing on the roof and the swap outs that Clary's engineers and architects were willing to do with us to keep that at a no-cost change order and the work that the county road department and Building and Grounds is going to do, we need to get an updated plan from Clary before I can send all of those drawings over to Bonnie Edwards at the surveyors department. She'll do the site plan for us. She said she's got most of it done and ready. It'll, it'll be quick once we get those papers from Clary. And then I will apply for the building permit. And we can, we can start concrete right now. We're looking sometime in March with a goal of definitely having the concrete done by April first. And then the building is slated for erection the month of May. So this, this project has some legs to it now and-
That'll make it snow.
It has snowed in April and May here before.
Just planning pouring-
They're probably used to it. I don't think that'll slow them down a whole lot. But it was good to have everybody on site and all those conversations happening so we could discover, you know, what, what needed to be done to move this forward. I really appreciate the folks at Clary working with us and understanding that we have a very strict budget to adhere to, so.
Having David Pon on site for one of our meetings was very helpful.
Yes.
And having Clary's concrete guy on site as well to go over some of the details was very, very helpful as well. Even though that meeting was scheduled for four o'clock on a Wednesday, on a Friday afternoon.
Friday.
But it's still got done.
We have some great, great partners working with us on our project, so.
And two of them are sitting in the row over here.
Yes.
Thank you again, gentlemen.
And they just do that voluntary stuff so well, don't they?
With a smile on their face. Look at that, they're happy about it.
They went home and drank all weekend.
That's the report on, from Building and Grounds.
I don't have a committee report, but I do have maybe a-
Please.
-share of the, we had a kind of a semi-imprope pow-wow with some of the folks at Calvary Hills neighborhood. And it was two issues that drove that. The fire mitigation was, was a huge piece of that. Obviously, for whatever reasons, there's been a lot of fires up in that area. And concerns about ingress egress were discussed. And subsequently, we found out that the original map that suggested there were three ingress, ingress egress points don't exist and can't exist unless you would purchase private land and create a right-of-way. I mean, it's, it's one in, one out. There are some, the road department has some reservations, whether they think it's valid for the number of homes in that, that we, that we really gain a lot from a safety standpoint, you know, being a hundred and fifty yards apart on Twin Lakes Road. I mean, if you're at harm's risk, if we're out there, you know, what's going to be the difference of the road, a hundred yard, a hundred plus yards?
Now, is it a matter, is there a fence across there?
It's, it's owned by private property.
I get the pri, I know that.
Well, it's part of a pasture.
But it's fenced off pasture?
Well, I'm sure it is.
Okay, fenced off pasture, okay.
Yes.
So just as any other pasture, if we need to cut the fence, cut the, I mean, seriously, cut the fence and go.
Yeah, you can. Literally could cut the fence and get people out.
But if, if it's a logical place for fire, if it is, and I don't know if it is, I suppose it's always something that we could do a cost share or, I mean, if it's for a betterment, if we can legally, I mean, we could build a wire gate across there, you know, if, if that makes sense for us to do something, so appreciate the comments.
The other point was, and this was not related to the fire mitigation concerns, and Tyler was good enough to attend and had some advice and feedback and, and some of the, I think some of the people in the room were motivated to compel folks to do fire mitigation and others preferred it be a voluntary neighborhood thing. And I think that's what Tyler was suggesting, suggesting to those folks as well. Along that same vein was, there's been an ongoing issue with the aesthetics in the neighborhood. And it's, it's not just that neighborhood. We've all gotten those calls about nuisance and clutter and debris in the county. And this is probably where I'd stop and let Tyler make a few points, but somewhere in the annals of the, of the comprehensive plan, it refers to, and I don't, I'm, I'm using probably the wrong word, nuisance, but things that impact aesthetics. And it's noted, but as we've, I've discovered in the last year, well, actually, the last four years, because I've had one over on the west side of eighty-three, same, along the same lines of concerns about neighborhood decorum. And beyond the two-mile reach of the city, we really don't have any authority, correct, Tyler? Can you clarify that? I've oversimplified that.
The county can pass zoning regulations to deal with health, safety, and welfare. We can't use the nuisance word. We don't have that. But what our zoning regs do have right now is a provision for people to have, I believe they're called goods and materials. However you want to define that, not out in the open. They're supposed to be, you know, inside buildings or go for the property. Three point two-six on our zoning regulations is the section. It's extremely broad. I could probably argue goods is anything you can pick up and move. And some of the concerns that were brought forward by some of the residents in Calvary Hills were that, that was essentially being ignored. The county has its zoning regulation, it's valid, it's enforced, and they would like that enforced on some of the folks in the neighborhood. I suggested that perhaps the community out there try to get together and mitigate that themselves rather than by the government and their wives, because that's the last thing anybody living out in the country wants. That was fairly well received by some. The initial individual who had the issues, I had a conversation with her after the fact. I think I saw any concerns that she has. One of the things, a note that I took for myself is that during the comp plan rewrite, one of the things I would like to get done is perhaps tightening that regulation up a little bit, maybe even just defining what goods is. So that way, when somebody calls Judy or calls one of you folks and says, hey, I got a neighbor whose place is all junky, I know there's a section of the zoning regulations that deals with that, take them to court. Well, now I don't have to spend six months arguing over whether or not they had goods on their property. Here's the things you can have out, here's the things you can't. Pretty much that simple.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that operational definition is really key. And then the next question is, is who enforces it?
Well, and then the-
We don't have-
The problem is, is that there's, I'm not going to call them the silent majority because I don't know, I have a whole people, but most people live in the country for a reason.
Exactly.
They don't want the government-
Exactly.
-in their stuff.
I may have said exactly about it.
And that's, yeah, so I think when you push hard enough, if you get to the point where you, where you fund-
Yep.
Yes, there is a fire up there right now.
Yeah, there is. Right up by Hillcrest.
So, and as to your legal, is the last statement, and, this is not inclusive, but and, or something like that. Thank you.
Something just to tighten that up a little bit, so it's not whatever the lawyers want.
Tyler, I'm sorry, can you repeat the-
Yes.
Sorry.
Three point two-six. I'll double check that, that's not right.
Okay. Because this isn't the first time that topic's been discussed in the-
No, it's not.
Many, many, many years of it. Many years of it. Did you have any? No, I just, you know, like I said, just wanted everybody to be aware of it. Everybody gets those calls and, and I'm sympathetic, but I also live in the country and I drive by my own place sometimes when I'm coming home and go, gee, why, that looks bad, I need to clean that up. And, you know, really, but I, my closest neighbor's a mile away. I'd sure hate to think that, that my beautification standards are going to be critiqued by somebody in government. And I, and I get this stuff, but one of the things that, going back a number of years on that, is I pointed out to the folks that our family has business ownership in another state, and we have been not subjected to, but potentially subjected to HOAs. by my own place sometimes, when I'm coming home and go, gee, why, that looks bad, I need to clean that up, and, you know, really, but I, my closest neighbor's a mile away. I'd sure hate to think that, that my beautification standards are gonna be critiqued by somebody in government. And I, and I get this stuff, but one of the things that, going back a number of years on that, is I pointed out to the folks that our family has business ownership in another state, and we have been not subjected to, but potentially subjected to HOAs, owner associations, and to the discovery of the folks who wanted to impose further restrictions on some of us and our properties, they found out that the HOA didn't have any legs under it, because there's no covenants, there's no encumbrances on the deeds, because we, first thing we did was look, and I'm not obligated to honor any HOA, but I did point out to a couple of these folks, that if you, if you really have what you feel is a majority position, perhaps you should ask the people in that subdivision if they want to, in state, an HOA, and that would be up to them to enforce, not the county. And they set their own standards, and I don't know if you can pre, or if you can subsequently to, I think you'd, you'd totally have to be voluntary, landlord should either sign in it or not, or, you know, buy in or not, but that's the only alternative I see, is that some of these rural divisions, either A, when you first start them, you create an HOA that does have some boundaries, and bylaws, and definitions of what's acceptable, and, and I can see both sides of it, I can see both sides of it, because as we've had testimony from a gentleman in North Platte in past years, you know, a lot of these subdivisions are not well thought out, somebody brought up drainage on the roads, some of these drainage issues on these subdivisions cannot be fixed, there's no place to take the water, because they built at the bottom of the watershed, and there's literally, without spending a million dollars, and I'm not exaggerating, there's a couple of them in Hillcrest, there'd be no way to get rid of that problem, except dig a vault, and directional bore, and, and push that water, literally pump that water out. So, some of these you can't solve, because they weren't planned out well in their inception, but moving forward, it's, I think it's maybe a good lesson to be learned, that when we have people come and adopt and create subdivisions, that maybe more of these things should be considered. So, the next 20 years from now, the board doesn't have another subdivision that didn't plan out draining, and drainage, and other issues.
Well, in theory, that should all be covered by our subdivision regs, so that's some of the planning...
Planning and zoning, yeah.
Should be looking, I don't, I assume these subdivisions, when they had the 70s and the 60s, didn't have those.
Yeah, it was wild, wild west, so.
So hopefully, that's not as huge as it went forward.
Yeah.
I'd like to give an update, and a big thank you to Becky for the work that she did on Friday, getting the raise grant application submitted with Samantha, it was a well-put-together, strong package that was submitted.
Thank you for mentioning that, for having me.
And we'll see how this shakes out come June, it's gonna be a quick turnaround, but Becky, thank you, I know you're busy and...
We got her in.
A lot of really good letters of support, really good letters of support, from DOT, Senator Fisher, Senator Ricketts, Congressman Smith, Congressman Bacon, the Chamber, the city, North Platte, the Village of Hershey, Yellen Port Authority.
Are we gonna, are you gonna have a printout of that packet for us to review?
Sam is putting on that.
I mean, I've seen the application, the, the rough draft of the application, I did not see it after, I believe there were some adjustments that were asked for, that were probably made, I haven't seen the final draft, and I'd like to see the letters of support.
Sure. We'll make that available.
Very good. I'm gonna parlay my report back off of Kent's discussion about the fires up north. I had conversation, or an exchange with Chief Thompson, and he has put together two wildlife mitigation meetings. The first meeting is gonna be March 5th at 6:00 PM, at the Lincoln County Fairgrounds egg building. The second meeting is March 7th at 6:00 PM, at Axes and Aces, 675 East North Lake Road. The reason they're doing two meetings, and one's on the south side of town, one's on the north side of the town, is, he thought it would be more convenient for people who live north of the interstate to make it to the fairgrounds, but he did specify, you're welcome at both meetings, either or, it's not area-specific. So, if people have feedback, input, they're welcome at the meetings, they will be rolling out some plans that the fire department has in place.
And those are at 6 o'clock, right?
6 o'clock, both nights, the 5th and the 7th. The other updates I have, Building and Grounds, the HVAC update that we are doing to eliminate the tube that runs out of the courthouse is being addressed, they started working on it last week, the city, the county Building and Grounds, along with some outside contractors, have started that work, and the generator pad has been marked out. We still do not have the switch in, they are having weekly calls with the people that are shipping the switch, we expect an update March 1st on the ETA for, for the switch. We're not gonna actually get real excited about that project until the switch is here, we're not gonna make any plans for anything else, because of how it's been prolonged.
But, Michaela, I need to ask you a question, because I'm always great at having great ideas on somebody else's work that they've been doing forever and ever, ever. My guess is, it's probably Hall's elect that have been kind of pushing that switch, because it's through them, is that correct?
No, it, well, it's NMC is who the switch was ordered through, so it is their sales reps that are...
Okay, so, let's go beyond that, because God bless a gentleman that I used to work for, who is no longer here, but he absolutely would not accept, well, it's delayed, or it's got, I mean, he would actually, I mean, he had me do some quite unusual things in his employ, and we'd make trips back and knock on somebody's door in Indiana, and say, hey, I'm looking so-and-so, so who are you, to try to run some of these things down, and we usually, as a public body like this, may have more clout than someone else. So, is there some way that we can, either with or without Tyler's help, I don't know that, get to the bottom of this, because enough is enough? Is there some way that we can think outside of the box and say, well, you know, this hasn't worked forever, so maybe speaking with the right people, you know, a $400 trip back knocking on somebody's door is pretty cheap right now. Just a question.
I can, I can explore that possibility, I will say, Kylie Hall, Booker Boyer, myself, and the local representatives from NMC have participated in meetings, phone calls, I'm on an email chain, but turning up the heat, it might be time for that, I agree.
You know, I don't know, maybe it, maybe it's, maybe they have some government contracts, I don't know, maybe we have, you know, somebody, just, just a thought, just maybe start outside that box.
It's my understanding that the problem is at the manufacturer, that, that the switches are not being built.
Yeah, it's the supply chain thing.
So, I don't believe they are rolling off of an assembly line and going to someone else, it's at the production of the switch is where the problem is, so, but I will, I will look into that, Joe, and give you some feedback.
I wonder if anybody else makes that switch here.
Might be worth exploring.
See how easy, see how good I am at that?
Hey, sometimes, sometimes having outside perspective who hasn't been in the conversation from the beginning is a good thing. Finally, update on LB869, Tom Gann and I went to the Capitol last week, Tom did a fantastic job with his testimony, the room was full of people that we had not met, who had not been involved in all of the calls, and, and there was a lot of support for both LB869, and then we stuck around and participated in LB1037 at the request of Senator Brewer and John Cannon, and it was good to witness all that work that is being done. Senator Brewer, at the end of our testimony for LB869, recommended it for a consent calendar, so I'm not sure when that will happen, but I'll keep watching and keep giving you updates.
And could you tell us, what does 1037 deal with, Michaela?
1037 deals with outside resources who are not veteran service officers, making offers to veterans to help them file claims, and try to get more benefit for a, for a fee. Excuse me. So, basically, in that room that day, they labeled it, the nickname for this bill was shark, these entities that are trying to assist veterans, basically, what it boiled down to is, it looked very much like a scam, in that they, the veteran service officers, both at the county level and the state level, do this work for the veterans for free, the veteran gets all of the benefit, and some of the entities that are approaching benefits, as, as luck would have it, several people in the room, the day before the testimony, received a blank, blanket text message from a company, offering to help them file for veterans' benefits, and there's anywhere from 10% to 25%, to as much as 40%.
Of their benefits, yeah.
Of their benefit going to the entities, and there were three gentlemen from companies that testified against passing this bill to protect veterans from being swindled, so...
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you guys see Booker down here earlier, did he text any of you about the issue?
Yes, yes, there has been a issue with the sewer line out on the north side of the building, and the east restrooms are closed, till they get that addressed.
I get that repaired, right?
Get it what?
Repaired.
Yeah, what did I say?
Addressed.
Addressed. Or repaired.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the group, Becky? Yeah?
Tyler?
Tammy, could I ask you to give a quick feedback on the...
Causes hate and discontent.
I'm not sure if you guys are all aware, but Joe Wazori approached Tom Gann and I last year, and Tammy's been very involved in all of the conversations about resurrecting County Government Day. Tammy took, the rest of us were kind of procrastinating, and Tammy took the bull by the horns, and got the ball rolling, and they had a meeting last week. Would you like to give us some feedback on that, Tammy?
Sure, I don't have my attendance record here, but, and also Caitlin Jacobson out at the 4H, she's the new extension educator, I think that's her title, she took over for Brenda, often can, very involved, and wants to help as much as she can with this, but we had a meeting, and we've kind of had the process rolling for September 26th is County Government Day. Tyler's working previously to get mock trial, or whatever he wants to do with mock trial going, but we're getting donations, everybody's great, and we're gonna hold out.
Very good.
Thank you.
So, plan that, because we'll have the Commissioner there doing something as well.
Yeah, you need...
September 26th.
September, okay.
You can set that up.
I will do that.
And anything you need from us, Tammy, just ask.
Anything else?